Already standing.
Go ahead, you're there.
Uh. Yeah, so gavel, gavel, gavel. Uh, on this day of June fifteenth nineteen eighty-six, uh, city council is now in session. I am the honorable and hell of a guy, Ashley Williams, uh, interim leader of the council, which will be stepping down effective immediately after my announcement of the winner of the mayoral election. Uh, by popular vote and majority vote, uh, Dr. Gilbert Brown will be our next mayor.
Congratulations.
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 Congrats.
Okay. Uh, Dr. Dr. Gilbert Brown, uh, you you want to be sworn in?
Uh, sure. Yes.
Dr. Gilbert Brown, do you promise not to be corrupt?
Yes.
Okay, you're sworn in. Congratulations, sir.
Oh, boy.
Oh. Well, that that was easy.
Yeah.
Best damn swear in there ever was.
Thank you.
Is it Dr. Mayor Brown?
Doc- Dr. Dr. Mayor Brown, I think.
Well, the Dr. Doctor is now here to give you the news. Uh, I got bad case of sitting the hell back down.
Alright. Of course, just want to first thank everyone on city council as well as everyone in the audience who has voted for me. Thank you. I will do my best in this office to, uh, you know, to help push the city forward and, you know, remind everyone how great of a city this is. So I'll start off this meeting then with, or we can start this meeting then with officially with the pledge of allegiance since we haven't done that in about a month. That everyone could stand up and please look at a flag someplace. A bunch of them.
The only ones that are back there.
Casey, what are you doing?
You you good? Alright. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation. My god. Indivisible. With liberty and justice for all.
And just say no to drugs, everybody. Remember that. Drugs are bad.
Thumbs up for America. Alright, so to kick off the city council meeting, just talk about a couple things. Uh. City council will be talking about the times for, uh, future city council meetings. We do know that, uh, these earlier meetings are more difficult for people to attend. We're hoping that this would help give a voice to those who normally cannot make it to the later meetings. However, it is going to begin interfering with other members on the council from being able to participate. So there is going to be an active discussion to, uh, try to find a proper time that will work best for everyone. Um, I do know something we can talk about regarding this real quick is for this next week because of a conflict with an event that I would like everyone to participate in. Uh, that being the, uh, you know, Harmony Jades, uh. Sorry?
Run run for your life.
Oh, no, I know. Yeah, run for your life. Event next week that I believe is at six PM Eastern, which would conflict with the later day. So next week, I'm going to, uh, propose to council that we do have a earlier meeting just so that way there is no interference with, uh, said event.
Uh.
Do you have a comment?
No, I'll be right back.
Okay.
I would like to propose four o'clock Eastern Standard Time. Yeah, it gives us, uh, an hour or two for council, and then it gives people an hour to get themselves together and or three o'clock as this current time we are at for that. That's the time that I would propose that I think would probably be best.
Anyone else have any thoughts or opinions on the matter?
For this coming week, I should be able to make any time.
Okay, I guess does it not work for anyone?
I know this upcoming week, um, I will not be able to make it due to a family gathering.
Okay.
Got water.
Let's just have a, uh. Yeah, I'm saying, if there's any other objections, let's just have a quick vote. This is approved for tomorrow's or next week's time. And then we can talk afterwards about, uh, going forward from then. So those who are in favor with a four o'clock city council meeting next week, please say aye.
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 Those against?
Aye.
Heard you. Right, that was, uh, majority. So next week's city council meeting will be at four PM Eastern. Alright, uh, other things just to discuss to the council and to, uh, those in attendance, there is some legislation that I'm currently working on. As we know, there has been some difficulties when it comes to filling vacant seats uh, with the council and with myself now becoming the mayor, there is one open vacant seat and potentially a second one. Uh, because, uh, a vice mayor cannot hold a city council seat, um, as well. And so one of the things I'm proposing, if a sec- a second city council person or city council seat does become vacant, is to push legislation to reduce the number of council seats to six. And also adjust, um, the mayoral votes in order to make things fair and consistent as it is currently. And so that's something that I am currently working on. Uh, in addition, I am also planning on working on reestablishing the SESB just so that way there isn't a dependence on the police force when it comes to security for the city council meetings and other government, uh, events. Those are the, uh, the main things right now that I am working on. I have other legislation that I am drawing up as well, but it's still, uh, early, uh, too early for announcement right now. So hopefully next week I can give you more information on those.
Thank you.
Anyone or who wants to speak next?
Yeah, I'll go. What are we gonna do with the eight chairs?
We'll each get a little bit more space.
That's when Robert Dayne up. And, uh, first, to avoid a medical emergency, um, can I ask if anybody has any food because I'm about to starve to death?
I got you, hon.
Thank you so much. Uh, secondly, I just want to congratulate graduate, uh, uh, Dr. Dr. Mayor Brown. Uh, I I do believe he's gonna make a fine mayor, uh, and I look forward to working with the council uh, with him to, uh, to make this city all it can be. I have nothing new to propose this week, and I thank you all very much for your time.
Thank you. Right, who like to go next?
Uh, good afternoon, everyone. Councilman Tim Bradford. Um, I have nothing new to propose this week. I just wanted to state that the fire department is getting back in action. I did resign from the BBB when I took the position uh, back in fire. Um, but the Los Santos Fire Department will be in action in and, uh, starting to hire recently and soon. That's all I have for this week.
Thank you. I guess it's going down in order. Sal, do you have anything?
I don't have anything this week. I'm still working on some stuff.
Okay. J C?
You elected Mayor Brown. Congratulations. Uh, my name is Casey King. Uh, I would like to open something up for discussion. Uh, and that is regarding the public law number twelve in our constitution, uh, regarding expungements. I would like to discuss the possibility of lowering the time limits um, that are now required. I think that's maybe too extensive. I've been talking to uh, some citizens of late, and I've noticed we have a couple who are new to the city and have committed those crimes but are, uh, working to better themselves and uh, to actually, you know, be better citizens of the community and have, uh, worked to have good jobs, but I'm afraid that the times are a little, uh, extensive, and I was wondering if we could just maybe possibly, uh, open the floor to discuss those.
Do you mind, uh, just read reading off real quick what the current uh, expungement uh, fine or I guess payment and duration is?
Sure. So as of um, the nonviolent offenders have fourteen days uh, where they are clear of any misdemeanors or anything. Uh, and then after that, they have forty-five days with no uh, offenses and a three thousand dollar fine. Uh, for the violent offender, you have to be twenty-one days clear to be approved for the expungement program. And after that, ninety days with no uh, altercations, um, and the fine is let's see. I'm not seeing a fine for that one. Six thousand dollars. Um, ninety days, I think, is a bit extensive. Um, especially if, you know, they're working towards that and, you know, a fear of maybe they think it's too long and you want to go to the city. They, uh, have their jobs and do what they want. So, I don't know. I just was wondering if we could discuss maybe, uh, lowering that. The fines, I think, are okay, but, uh, as far as like the the requirements for the, uh, the days.
Councilman Casey, uh, so you're telling me that if somebody, let's say, I'm gonna say accidentally commits a violent felony. You know, they did it and they just weren't thinking something may have happened. It's their first one. Um, they would have to wait a hundred and eleven days if they were to do it on the dot uh, to get an expungement and to be fully clear of that offense?
Correct.
Hmm.
Well, you have to wait twenty-one days to even be allowed.
Twenty-one, twenty-one days, right? There's twenty-one days you're waiting.
Yes.
And then you're also waiting an additional ninety days. So that's a hundred and eleven total.
Correct.
I will. You just have to be clear for ninety days. That's not additional.
But you can't have a, but you but you can't protect yourself because with with the violent, uh, with a, when they expungement, you still cannot carry a weapon on you. So if something were to happen where they need to protect themselves, that that citizen has to go unprotected themselves for over a hundred and eleven days.
Ninety.
Something I will also point out, uh, like, and we discussed this briefly before the meeting, was the, uh, section five being the fair start program. So people who are first offenders do have reduced um, periods for the expungements. So for nonviolent, does go down to fifteen days and a thousand dollars. Whereas for violent offenders, it is thirty days and two thousand dollars. So you know, so I guess one of the questions is, you know, for someone who does come in, you know, someone who does, you know, accidentally commit a felony and or even just a misdemeanor and is trying to go through the expungement, there really isn't much of a problem in that case. But when it comes to people who are repeatedly doing crimes and like, let's say violent felonies and this getting expungements, do you think it's like, we should have the time reduced because, you know, it seems as though they just are still doing crime and aren't really, you know?
Then they're they're not. If they keep continuing to do their crimes, then they're not qualified for the expungement.
Well, I'm saying like, what around the, uh, the duration. So be someone could still do violent crimes and then after, you know, the first, what's it, thirty days, do another one.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not following you.
Not, yeah.
It it it, I was, I was.
Do you want to clarify that?
Yeah, I'm trying to say it's like people who are doing, who are repeatedly doing crime. Doesn't necessarily have to be like, you know, within the expungement period, but someone who, you know, has read the constitution knows, okay, I can do a violent crime and and, you know, serve serve the expungement, get the charges dropped, and then recommit another crime.
Okay.
So there there's, so basically someone who's continuously doing felonies. Yeah, and but still.
Okay.
The expungement program.
Well, I would. I mean, I guess that's something we could, that's why I'm just bringing it all up for discussion, but maybe that could be, uh, a section that we add if we want to change this, you know, that you're not qualified for expungement again to uh, commit a, uh, violent felony.
If I may, we have the AG and a private attorney here. I have a question for either of them. I know you're in the audience sitting. You don't have, um, when we hit, you don't come to the podium. But is it true, and this is correct, that the expungement, even though it may be put in, it has to be approved by the, um, chief justice anyways? So wouldn't the chief justice be able to to see these patterns and deny the expungement? Well, that's actually, he wouldn't be able to deny the expungement because there's a, um, uh, it this is a part of our constitution that would be unconstitutional of him, uh, to do that. The only way he would be able to deny it is based off of what's in the constitution would be if they reoffend, uh, while in their expungement process, then they lose access to the expungement that they were trying to get through.
How, what do you know, Ashley?
Not much. Oh, thank you very much, Ashley. I just wanted a better clarification on that. I see the law. I just don't interpret it the best, the best way, and that's why we have people that know law better as in yourself and Chase Reeves, who is a private attorney.
And and Ashley, just to add to that, if if, uh, you can, uh, clarify, there seems to be some confusion as far as the amount of days that someone would have to to go through the expungement process. Could you clarify that first, please?
They are correct, uh, the what they, the days that described. Um, uh, I was more focused on, uh, the, uh, first time offender expungements because that seems to be what, uh, Councilman King's, uh, initial, uh, concerns were around. There's people who are the first time offenders getting their expungements.
Yes.
Where there's a much lower, uh, threshold when it comes to the times, uh, especially when it comes to violent felonies and especially when it comes to nonviolent felonies. Is that something that's being brought up to everyone? So if it's your first violent felonies or something is being told across the table? Or does your lawyer have to say that he wants this alternative program? Uh, the lo- lawyers generally, um, know, uh, whether or not this is their first felony or not because they'll have access to the person's records or at least what they believe to be their records. Um, as long as they've requested them, they should have access to it.
Yeah, and I can only speak to my law firm, but I do push the expungement program with my clients. If it's if it's there applicable and I can, I can get to the chief justice in the court, then I'll file for them. So we use it quite extensively around, I don't know, actually around ten thousand dollars worth of uh, court fees. So.
Yeah, we have about five active expansions, expungements right now.
Can't fucking stand that guy. I gotta get away from him. Sorry.
Uh, thank you very much for the answering the questions at my end.
Uh, I I do have a question and or interjection a bit. Um, so when I was, uh, working, I'll speak up. When I was working dispatch and I was front desk at DSO, I would often get people, brand new people in town, and I would talk to them about the fact that sometimes you get associated with people and you get a felony simply because you are an accessory because you happen to be with somebody, you know? And so, um, my, my observation would be perhaps we could, uh, lessen the the fines and the processes on people who are just accessories rather than, you know, people who have decided to commit that act on their own. I I mean, I don't, I I I've told people they've got to be careful about who they're socializing with, but you know, sometimes shit hap- oh, sorry decorum. Sometimes stuff happens and you just end up with the wrong people at the wrong time. So yeah, that's my observation.
Well, I think that's something that can be discussed further, like elsewhere or like on a later day or later time, just because it's not it's important but not necessarily relevant for expungement. So just to try to, you know, say focus on the expungements right now.
I will just, uh, uh, say that public laws, there's are three parties to a crime explicitly describes what, uh, what the AG would use, uh, to to charge people in that situation. So I would just say refer to that. I do agree that this isn't really part of our expungements. So I'll just leave it at that, though.
Thank you. So can I say something real quick?
Yeah, then I think, uh, Miranda wants to say something as well after.
Yeah, so you know, this is sort of a case by case scenario. So what if we just add like a first time offender clause so that it covers pretty much everything we're talking about, you know, like accessories and stuff. It's like, okay, if you're accidentally with the wrong person, that's probably your first offense also. Something like that.
I think, like I said, having something that we can talk later on, after we've read through the, was it public law, three part parties to a crime? So we better understand it so we can have a proper discussion. Miranda?
My name's Miranda Rice. And as everyone knows.
Hi, Miranda.
As everyone knows, I used to be a violent felon. And the pro- I think the process is okay the way it is. If anything, repeat offenders should have to pay, I think, I believe they gotta pay double, like their time and money has increased each time they try to do a an expungement. And it's common sense if you, uh, violent felonies, it's common sense to avoid those things. Coming from someone who's done violent felonies, you just gotta use your brains, not be so stupid. If you're gonna do the crime, you gotta do the time.
Amen.
And just crying about having to pay all these fees and everything just makes no sense. I paid, I've paid over a hundred thousand dollars in fines since I've been in the city for crime. And I've never once cried about it. That's all I gotta say.
So are you going with the mentality of just because you did, they have to?
Well, why, it's not that hard to go get a job and make money and pay it.
Okay, with a lot of businesses.
There's construction, there's lumberyarding. I even do that still and I have a job.
It's the argument of go do construction. I've had to do it. So why can't, why you can do the same thing? I understand that. That's just, I don't think that's a very poor mentality to to look at that.
Well, maybe you should pick better friends.
Alright, let's I'll have this back and forth, please. Ashley.
Ashley Williams, Attorney General.
Hi, Ashley.
So hmm, I initial concerns, I agree with, um, Councilman King of that, yeah, you, if you're a first time offender, that there should be some difference there between a repeat offender versus a first time offender. Um, and the times, uh, may seem exorbitant when you look at the person who's a repeat offender. However, the repeat offender shows a pattern. Like this isn't just an accident that they were with these people, or it wasn't just an accident that they, you know, got a little trigger happy. Um, I I would stand by the times as they are written in the constitution currently, um, for repeat offenders. Um, as far as our newcomer expungements, there's, there are a lot of safeguards that try to help new people uh, make sure that they're not going down the wrong path. Uh, the first, the first of which is the sheriff's department and officer discretion. Um, officers, and I've talked to many of them who are trained on dealing with new people and like kind of giving them guidance in the town because sometimes new people, their first contact with people in the city are our sheriff's deputies. Um, and I've seen them use, uh, a copious amount of officer restraint when it comes to dealing with new people to help them learn about what's going on. Um, and even with that, even if they do step into the wrong path, there is again the first time expungement, which those times are, I would say, pretty minimal for the for what it is for a violent crime or even a nonviolent crime. It's a pretty minimal amount of time and, uh, the amounts as well. And I think, uh, Mr. Reeves, uh, could probably comment on that a little bit. See, being that he has clientele coming to him about expungements and we've got active expungements going on right now. Uh, hmm, and I'm not gonna address, uh, uh, the councilwoman's, uh, question on the accessories because, uh, that's a whole other thing that, uh, I'm not gonna get into here. We can discuss after this meeting if you guys want a rundown of what that all is about. But as it stands, I think the expungement program is working. Um, we've opened it up so the, um, private attorneys in the state can, uh, file for expungements for their clients. So there are now more opportunities for clients to get their, or former criminals to get themselves back on the right path. And it is important that we do see that the these time periods exist, that they are not actively engaged in crimes. Um, otherwise, yeah, we're just gonna take their money. They're going to get their expungement and then they're just gonna go back into crime immediately. We've seen that when the time periods are too short. Um, we want to see that these people are actually earning it. And, uh, yeah, that's.
And Mr. Just, uh, Attorney General, what would be an example of a time period where that was too short?
Uh, uh, so we'll take, for example, um, oh, oh, hold on, let me actually get to my notebook. This is a name that none of you are going to recognize, um, but, uh, they've since let's say Sasha, Sasha Lankov. Um, they put in it for their expungement about ten months ago. Uh, and essentially during that time for our expungements, they they were, uh, a little bit shorter, uh, for that, and this person reoffended. Um, uh, this is just one that's coming off the top of my head because I was aware of it at the time. Uh, but yeah, there there are mult- there are multiple cases that that show up that way.
And and my question isn't so much the example cases. I like, it's, it was more towards what were the time limits at that time that seemingly were that or in practice proved not to be long enough?
Oh, it was like a week, uh, two. So like, you're gonna get seven, fourteen days.
So so considerably shorter than what they currently are?
Yes.
Okay.
And I would not say that what we have for our first time expungement is is that short. I think that is, um, I think it's a realistic amount of time, like a month. I think that's to keep your nose clean. I think that's reasonable around a violent felony.
Okay, thank you very much.
Oh, speaking, speaking of expungements, while you're up there, AG, um, you said that you collect money for the expunges. Where does that money go? Uh, it goes into the DOJ, uh, computer. That doesn't, it goes to the DOJ, it goes to DOJ. That's, that's their budget. Yep. Okay.
Um, and beyond, that's one of the only ways the DOJ makes, currently makes money.
I was just curious where it went. I wasn't sure if it go to PD, DOJ, or City Hall. No, it goes to the DOJ. Um, but yeah, that's, uh, literally the only way that the DOJ has any money going into their computer. Oh, no, no, no. I was just asking the question. That's perfectly fine. That that makes sense. And then I I think I want to get to the, finally, the the cusp of, I think, Councilwoman King's, um, uh, question is, holding people, the expungement process possibly holding people back from doing is what they want to be doing. Um, there are very few jobs, uh, that if you have an active expungement, uh, you can't do. Uh, so like, for example, city council members, uh, I don't believe. Uh, so like, for example, city council members, uh, I don't believe you can be city council members if you have an active expungement going on. Your expungement needs to be complete. Same thing for my position. Um, can't actually, I can't be, uh, somebody who's an active criminal and be the Attorney General. Same thing for the sheriff's deputies. They have to be completely expunged before they can move forward. However, when it comes to places like Benny's, PDM, that sort of thing. That's up to those individual owners and managers to decide whether or not if they're in an active expungement, they're okay to work there. Hell, I think even, uh, like Benny's, they can hire felons if they wanted to and there's not really anything against that. Fire does as well, as long as you're going through an active expungement. So, yeah, so that's the other thing where I wanted to point out that it is, there is not many limitations on people who are currently felons. And what is they're able to do, um, uh, except for like EMS, you know, big structural things in our city. Um, but like working at, like PDM, working at, uh, Benny's, working any construction job, working any other job. Other than things that are vital to the infrastructure of the city. Um, yeah, because they've lost that privilege to do that because they have. Broken the law. Yeah, any other questions for me? Uh, otherwise I'm gonna sit myself back down. Oh, beautiful.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ashley. You're a hell of a guy.
For me, just to sort of add onto a last comment, if things were to change. With, when regards to the time for, times for the, uh, expungements. I don't, like I said, I think I, the times to serve the expungement are fine and fair. Cause like you said, the only thing that really, you know, being a felon and not being fully expunged. Prevents is just, you know, arming yourself because you're still considered a felon. It's only. You know, I think for violent felons, I'm not sure if this is a general thing or not. I gotta double check that. But, um. I think one area that possibly could be reduced would be the times before you can start an expungement. So that rather than it being three weeks, that could be reduced. People are still serving the full time. For the expungement, but at least the process can get started earlier. So that's sort of.
Like a light for people if that's the route we went down.
Yeah.
I think that I would be on, more on board with that, uh, cause at least it does reduce that time down. Uh, a little bit and it's on the before half and the after half, because no matter what, they're sort of gonna have to serve that time for the expungement.
Yep.
That is something I could get mine.
And just for information, um, if you are a violent felon, you are not allowed to carry any kind of firearms. But if you are just a felon, you can.
Right, thank you for that. Anyone else have any other comments for this? All right, anything else, Casey?
Um, I can't, I, I do have other things that I can bring to the next week. Uh, that I'm working on, but yeah, uh, that's it for this one.
Right, thank you. Uh, Adam?
Um, I don't have anything this week. I'll just, uh, congratulate you for your mayorship.
Thank you. And then, uh, Daniel.
Uh, yeah, I don't have anything either, uh. Yeah, I just wanna apologize for missing the last two meetings and. Some business in Dallas to attend to, so.
All right, and then, uh, Polly.
Um, Councilperson, uh, Pauline Morris. Um, so. I had talked, uh, well, Robert and I have talked about the possibility. Of, you know, uh, uh, the travel and tourism thing and I, I do believe that we. Have to continue to try to move that forward. Um, one of my, I. I come across a new person just the other day and, um. I think we, I'm gonna reiterate what I've said a couple of times now. I think we really have to work hard on how we reach out to new people that we come across. And I know this, this isn't none of you. This is, this is just like, just in general, um, this man. He had been in the city for, I think he said two or three days. And I was the first person to actually talk to him, like have a conversation with him and. You know, me, I will talk to anybody. I'll talk to a tree, but I think that it behooves us to, you know. Again, reach out to people, um, and you know, this is, this is for everybody out here too. Just reach out to people. And if you see somebody, if you see a face you ain't seen before, you just, you know. Just talk to them. This guy said that the one interaction he had before me. Was a citizen telling him to, and he will, uh, you know, decorum prevents me from saying this. But, um, it to tell him to F off, uh, and it's like, and it was a citizen. I said, surely. Surely that was a local that said that. And he said, no, it was a citizen. So, um, yeah, I think. I don't wanna say we need to do better, but I think we need to do better, cause you know. It, we're gonna instill some sort of fear in people for even coming and trying to be a part of our city. If we aren't a kinder, gentler place to be. That's all.
Thank you. And then, um, cause you were talking about legislation to push for the, uh, what's it, tourism and travel. Uh, yeah, we can, if you have that, you can, uh, pass it to us and we'll read it through. We can discuss that. Um, this following meeting and, uh, go from there.
Yeah, in fact, at the next meeting, I was going to present that legislation. I just wanted to get the mayor established and let him. Get started and that was gonna be the next thing I presented.
Okay. Anything else that anyone wants to bring? Bring to the front? All right, then we'll open up to, uh, those in the audience. If anyone has any issues they'd like to bring forward or any comments.
Uh, Ashley Williams, AG, also just standard citizen guy too. Um. Yeah, I, I just wanna kind of like talk to, uh, about, uh, that new person's interaction with somebody, uh, and just. To speak as, uh, because we are a free state. Honestly, like the, the gentleman got told to F off. Uh, that's gonna be one of the things that every one of us has to deal with because there is freedom of speech in this state. Um, like, uh, all of us, we, we were not required to be polite, uh, Councilwoman. Um, we, we, we do wanna make sure people are feeling welcome at, at, at all ti- sure, that's, that's great, but also. We wanna make sure those interactions have a little bit more depth to them. They may not always be happy, fun interactions, but you know. Uh, there are sometimes I'm grumpy and I don't wanna talk to anybody, you know what I mean? I've, I've got things on my mind. Some guy coming up to me, it's just going like, hey, hey, what, what are you doing? I might be a little rude. Like, you know, I might be a little rude. That might be a thing. And that's just kinda how it goes. You know what I'm saying? I'm normally a pretty, pretty kind person, chatty, much like, uh, the councilperson, but, yeah. Um, I would say that, yeah, and under that vein. Always like, you know, deep interactions, but I think everyone here, I don't think, nobody here needs to be told that. But. I, I would push back on the idea that I need to be, uh, any sort of overtly and friendly and welcoming person at all times. Um, because, you know, uh, uh, as much as I am the Attorney General, I'm also a citizen. I'm a human being and I, uh. You know, I'm gonna have my moods, you know what I mean? I know Bob's got his moods. That's all, that's all I got.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean you had to be kind, Ashley.
Oh, thank you. That's, that's good. Everyone else be kind, though.
Everybody be kind, but Ashley. Oh, and Huddy.
All right, last call for, uh.
Councilman's for, or Councilwoman's for selective kindness. Privileges for those, but not for all. All right, thank you. That's all I wanna say.
Smile right, goddammit.
All right, anyone else, uh, from the audience wanna come forward?
Chase Reeves has been mayor. I wa- I wanna make sure not to upset Day knob here. Make sure that I'm promoting this. Very well, very well. Um. Chase Your Dreams is still, uh, an active foundation. So if any businesses still, uh, or any people looking to get grants for their businesses, we've successfully helped about. I don't know, four or five businesses thus far. Um, just to wanted to let everyone know that it's still open and we're still accepting applications. And that's it.
Thank you. Where the fuck you been? I think that is everyone who wants to speak. So I'll hereby call this meeting over. Turned. Thank you. Gobble, gobble, gobble.
Now that the meeting's over, fire department is.
I feel like, uh, PED is the, the cooler option, but that's just me.
Hey, Huddy, can you re, can I meet you outside real quick?